The Wi-Fi. Can you get the Wi-Fi on?
Jean, you got the Wi-Fi on?
Jean was, they had to be up later.
Thirty-seven. They're not.
Good evening.
Good night.
Thank you for joining us tonight. This is our first televised work session of the Mayor and Commission of Athens Clark County. And work sessions are primarily for the purpose of providing and clarifying information for your elected officials to help us make more informed decisions. No final decisions are made at these sessions, and there's no public participation, although we welcome you to be with us and observe. I just wanted to take a real quick minute of personal privilege to remind everybody that Veterans Day was this past Sunday, and I'd like to take this opportunity to thank our veterans for their service on behalf of our community and let them know that we will never forget what they've done for us. Our first item of business tonight is interaction with our local legislative delegation. I'm sorry, folks, I bit my tongue. And so I'm probably going to be stammering. A special session of Georgia Legislature was started this morning to work on the appropriation of funds for areas of the state that are dealing with hurricane damage. So we're not sure who will make tonight's meeting. We have two of our representatives with us, but our senators, as far as we know, may even still be in session because they had not come out of session when y'all left, I understand. So we'll now move on to that part of our agenda, and we'll be discussing some items. And you all got a list of the items that the Mayor and Commissioner are interested in discussing tonight. And what I would like to do is let both of you just sort of give us an update on the session and your impressions and anything that you think we need to know, and then we'll move around with the commissioners and see what they would like to ask y'all.
Would you like to go first?
Sure.
Hey, everybody. I'm Representative Jonathan Wallace for House District 119. If you're not familiar, it covers the southeastern portion of Athens Clark County, thinks Cedar Shoals High School and below, a little bit of Five Points, a little bit of downtown. So first off, I just want to say I'm coming to the end of my tenure here. I just want to say thank you very much for serving with you. It's been a pleasure and an honor of mine to serve and represent a portion of Athens Clark County. Yeah, so this was the first morning, so things are just getting started at the first day of the session. There's going to be some, obviously, the hurricane relief is one of the reason that the special session was called, but we're also going to see some issues and items related to economic development activity. And looking at a couple of those, I don't think there was any that were going to be specific to this area that I saw on the docket there, but we just got that information today, and I think we'll see, we'll actually have more information as we go forward in the next couple of days. So that's what I've seen so far. I don't know if my colleague has anything to add.
Yeah, thank you, Representative Wallace. I'm Spencer Frye, representing North and East Athens, House District 118. I like the new meeting room. I think this is pretty nice. Everybody gets to watch it at home on TV, I guess, right? Is that what's going on?
Yeah.
Okay.
On your digital device.
Just checking. Oh, can you watch it on your phone?
Yeah.
This is amazing. Yeah, we still have TVs. So, yeah, we came into session today at 1:30. We had, I rushed over here from a Ways and Means Committee meeting that was addressing a couple of the things. We spoke about the forestry relief in South Georgia is part of the bill that we're trying to pass. I don't believe that we're going to have an opportunity to split the forestry relief from the hurricane and the jet fuel tax abatement and some other tax opportunities for folks apart. I think it's going to be an all or nothing vote in one bill. I've got the bill in the truck. I forgot to bring it in. I was trying to rush and be on time, but if anybody wants to look at it, I'll send you a copy later on. We'll know what goes on later on this week. I have another Ways and Means Committee meeting in the morning regarding, that's when we're going to talk about the jet fuel tax abatement for all jet fuel in the state, not just for Delta, but they'll be the largest recipient of that benefit. That's about it. We should be in session until Monday. State law says that we have to have five days, but there is talk about us staying till Friday night at midnight and gaveling in and gaveling back out so we don't have to come back if we finish our business. There's all sorts of ways to handle that.
Well, great. Well, you all got a copy of what the Commissioner was asking electronically, and I gave you a written copy tonight. So are any of the commissioners here that would have specific questions or concerns they would like to express? Mr. Neesmith.
Thank you. One of the items has to do with sales tax, especially online sales tax. I had the experience, week before last, of booking or buying tickets online from my home, which happens to be a 30622, and for the first time, they sent me an invoice that said Oconee County Sales Tax. So I wonder how many people who are in a 30622, which has a Bogart address, are paying Oconee County Sales Tax that might be in Jackson or Clark County? So we have no way of knowing, so it continues to be a problem.
Okay. Was that from the vendor?
From the vendor.
That's interesting. I mean, it's a vendor issue as far as...
Well, I suppose it is. I don't know how a vendor discriminates where the sales tax should be paid.
Should be by the county, not the zip code.
Well, I know, but they don't know what county I live in. They have my address, but unless there's a means for them to figure that out, all they see is Bogart. I'm just wondering if that's a prevalent problem. I suspect it is.
And where Athens Clark County would be missing out on taxes because of fairly large...
From fairly large zip code.
Interesting. Want to make a note of that.
And just to make sure I'm understanding correctly, they did not ask your street address. They only asked for the zip code. Is that correct?
No, they asked by my street address and then the zip code.
They did ask for the...
Which is Bogart, Georgia, 30622.
Okay. So they did ask for the street address. They should be able to figure that out then on their backend, but they're not displaying that to you. That could be worrisome.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know, like for Amazon, who's getting the sales tax?
I thought y'all's address got changed to Athens.
No, no, that's just along Atlanta Highway. It's not in the neighborhoods.
Okay.
And Spencer, just to clarify a little bit, there are a lot of Athens addresses that are not in Clark County, and so the vendors can't go by, if it says Athens, Georgia, or, you know, Watkinsville or whatever, you know, because, like, 30606 goes into Oconee County as well as Clark County. And my experience as a tax commissioner, when we went year-round, and we started having problems with the Rottus computer, that even with the state's system, it was not assigning people to the right counties all the time.
Interesting.
And so that was a problem. But one of the things that ACCG and GMA both have as a priority is that we would like to have, for counties to have access to the Revenue Department's records so that we can look at them and see where things should be. And one of the reasons that we've been told that that's not possible is because of confidentiality of priority information of the companies. But the Tax Assessor's Office in Clark County here has a lot of proprietary information in the tax office, and in many of our offices, we collect social security numbers, so we have a lot of confidential information. So the counties should be trusted as much as anybody with confidential information. So that's, just for the future, that's a really big issue all over the state, not just here.
Is the question that we're not getting the sales taxes remitted to us that we feel we should be getting, and it's lower than what we record as the collection?
Yes, that's exactly right, especially for online sales. I mean, you know, for a business, brick and mortar business, of course, they report their own sales tax, and they know what county they're in, and that's how they do it. But for online sales, how do they do it?
Right. Is there a number that we think we're missing out on?
We have no idea.
We have no idea, and that's one of the problems, is because we don't have access, we have no way to validate or look at it. But another issue is, I remember in some of our workshops, one of the biggest problems with sales tax were convenience stores, where there would be, you know, a lot of, they could do cash sales and not permit sales tax to anybody, and there are just a handful of auditors for the whole state with Revenue Department. And I knew as tax commissioner, if I was doing, if that was a responsibility in the tax office here, and I could look at convenience stores and I'd say, okay, why is this one getting X and this one's getting Y when they're so similar and such similar, you know, not just convenience stores, but I knew them and knew their locations well enough, and that can't possibly happen on a state level. And I think that the state would see some increase in collections if we could ever get to that point that counties have access.
Sure.
Anybody else have any particular things they want to ask of our legislators, or, yes, ma'am, Ms. Link?
I want to talk about affordable housing. I talk about this almost every year, and I know Spencer talks about it, too, and he's made some requests of us on a local level to take some new look at some zoning and land use to better enable the construction of new affordable housing, and I do hope that come January, we'll get on that. But as far as on a state level, you know, we are hindered. Our hands are tied by state regulations when it comes to stuff like inclusionary zoning and, my mind is blanking right now, but the fees.
Impact fees.
Impact fees, that's what they're called, that we could focus towards affordable housing or offsetting infrastructure for affordable housing. But we also need to talk about, you know, the housing costs are driven by the market, you know, who is out there and what they're willing to pay, and our market is vastly impacted by a university student population that is increasingly wealthy. 60% of UGA students are from the top 20% income bracket, and they're having a tremendous impact on our housing affordability issues, especially since UGA, being the largest employer, still does not pay very well, even compared to other universities. So, I mean, those are issues that are state issues. As far as the HOPE Scholarship, you know, UGA students from wealthy families are given even more cash to spend when they're given a free ride through college on the backs of folks whose only hope is a lottery ticket. And also, UGA's pay scale, you know, that is a Board of Regents thing. So I hope that in considering an affordable housing issue, you'll consider the actual cause of the affordable housing challenges we have, rather than just mechanisms to enable more construction of affordable housing. Anybody else?
I got a comment.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate your comments, Commissioner Link. My two-year update, that was my two-year update on my ask list the last time we met a couple of years ago. I think, hopefully, that we can see some movement into low-cost housing investment by the city government through potentially the SPOLOST, which I have heard rumors of. I hadn't seen any real projects, but I think it's extremely important that we include, like you said, the wages in the conversation. I'm actually the Secretary of the Working Families Caucus. We had a meeting today working on our platform and our goals for 2019. I will be testifying in front of the Rural Development Commission on December 4th about low-cost housing, so the state is definitely aware that across the state there are issues, and hopefully, any action that is going to be taken in the rural development areas could also be kind of pushed over into some of the urban districts, and I think Athens would be a great target for that. So, the inclusionary zoning, Atlanta was able to require certain inclusionary zoning projects, but that was not from private developers. That was their own bond-funded issuance. So if, you know, there are ways to do it, I think, and we can get really creative with it. The smaller lot sizes, the smaller house sizes, the no driveway, distance apart rules, any rule that we make that has to do with housing really affects the affordability of it. And I think I'm ready to see the local government step up in partnership with the state to take some really important steps to combat this, that we've seen it a problem for a very long time.
Anybody? Mr. Gertsen and Throcky.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to talk a little bit more in-depth about number four, criminal justice reform, and I want to thank you for all the work that's happened in the General Assembly over the last several years. It gets born real dividends. You've seen significant reduction of the prison population in the corrections facility statewide as a result, and, you know, we're in this 25-year arc of diminished crime at the same time, so I think you really can, in a nuanced way, achieve multiple gains, you know, both in terms of fiscal management as well as in terms of community safety at the same time. A couple of things that I think would be beneficial for communities across the state, while the language here is marijuana decriminalization, I mean, I think really what we're talking about is penalty reduction and the opportunity, the explicit opportunity for local governments to be able to issue citations for low-level, under-announced marijuana possession, which several communities have done across the state, but if that was an explicit opportunity like it's been for shoplifting and refund fraud and some of the other things that I think y'all dealt with in the last session, I think that'd be helpful for the state. And in conjunction with that, to ensure that if you do have one of those citation arrests for low-level marijuana, that the offender is not registered in the GCIC database, so it does not impact them later on when it comes to employment prospects. And I really see that as kind of parallel with what y'all did a couple of years ago around minor and possession arrests, you know, again, moving to citation and not putting a black mark on somebody's record, you know, where they're going to have that mugshot that, as we know in the digital era, is out there forever.
No, that's right.
And then, it's my understanding that there was a relatively low, small set of crimes for which honor-recognizance bond were specified in the last session, and if you can look at expanding that list as well. I know that kind of within the Governor's Criminal Justice Coordinating Group, there was discussion of several other things that just didn't make the final cut. So, you know, to go back and look at, I think there was a report maybe back in February, and a prior one from last year, too, and continue to take some steps forward there.
I think we're going to see some movement on this. You know, there have been medical marijuana hearings from a commission that's put together, a joint-study commission in the House and Senate. We had a meeting here in Athens. From what I understand, they are potentially looking at the cultivation, manufacturing, distribution networks that could be, or that, as we move forward in those types of policies, I think we'll see those other policies come along with that. Currently, we'll just have to see what happens in our elections and see where we are when the dust settles, and it'll give us a really good idea of the path that we might be able to move forward with in this next session.
Ms. Throcky.
Yeah, I think the topic that I asked to have on here is number nine, the local regulations on installed septic tanks. And I'm not sure that I have a solution. I guess I'm just trying to share some issues that we have to deal with, but I don't think we have local regulations. It's at state level on the Health Department, right, that inspects the septic tanks. So we've got, I don't know the number, but the number of houses with homes and that single-family residents that have an old septic tank, the lots so small, if the septic tank failed, they would not be able to put in a new septic tank. So we are trying to do things to address the aging of them. I think a lot of them might be rental houses, so the people might not even know the proper, you know, protocols for septic tank. And so I think when we had talked about what could be done, we were wondering if there couldn't be increase in funding for those inspections with having a solution for it. And if anybody else can chime in, because I'm not covering it as well as I wanted, but I did get it on here, because it does affect affordable housing, and these areas where the septic tanks are, we want them to remain populated, and I think there might even have been incidences, I don't know if they've been condemned, the property, because of that.
Yeah. I sit on the Board of Health, and we moved a recommendation forward to the Mayor and Commission that we look into some local regulation of septic tank maintenance, requiring regular pumping, and we're not sure if state law allows us to do that when it comes to property rights limitations. You know, being that we do have a large stock of rental property and multifamily property, we've got some properties out there that were built kind of under misguided land use on septic tanks, and now they're moving into low-income housing, and, you know, are these property owners responsible for maintaining a properly healthy environment for their tenants? You know, it's very unclear as to who's checking up on them and who's responsible for maintaining them, and what happens when these tanks do fail and the properties are not able to be lived in anymore? So we really need some guidance on that.
Yeah, that's interesting. I mean, the local Health Department seems to, it's not run by y'all, but it's called Athens Health Department, so I think it brings a lot of ire onto this body because they look at the restaurants and oversee the septic tanks as well. So I'm not really sure if y'all are able to mandate inspections of septic tanks specifically. I don't think there's a...
I think we are.
I don't know if there's a law that precludes that either, right? I'm not sure either way how you could do that. Is there a way for y'all to mandate inspections of existing residential property?
We're told no.
Not really.
We're told it's a property rights violation.
Yeah. That would be an issue. I know the Health Department doesn't really get involved in a septic tank issue unless there's a problem reported, and if it's a new installation or a permit pulled to fix one.
And by the time a problem happens, it's too late.
Pardon?
By the time, it's obvious that a problem is reported, it's essentially too late. If we could require regular maintenance, regular pumping of these tanks, their lives could be extended by decades.
And it's not just about affordable housing. I mean, it's a public health issue as well. Because as they fail, you get fecal coliform into the ground.
And an environmental issue, our streams.
Not fun.
Right, because the areas in our county that don't have the sewage line to them are problematic environmentally because of the watershed, stuff like that. So where these are are also going to impact, as Commissioner Herring said, public safety and water quality.
And if you were able to run sewer lines in those areas, it's no guarantee that people would be required to hook up to them, right?
Or afford to.
They would have to pay for it.
Or afford to.
No, I know.
Yeah, right. Exactly.
And as Oconee County's found out, in Coles Creek watershed, you know, there's just logistical challenge and political challenge with saying, hey, that backyard swingset that you've been enjoying for so many years is going to get taken out because we're going to be running the sewer line through there.
But again, the reality is if there were sewer lines there, and particularly if you've got rental property, rather than have their property condemned and unused, they would find a way to hook up to the sewer lines.
No, they would. I mean, what's the...
I think we've sort of exhausted this item, so anything else anybody wants to talk about?
I got a couple of questions about some stuff up here.
Absolutely, sure.
Localized speed enforcement? Who did that one?
I think we...
Localized speed enforcement, number three.
That's been on the list for about four or five years now.
Longer than that.
Yeah.
Closer to 10.
Is that the fact that technically in...
We can't enforce speed limits in neighborhoods using radar.
Right, right. That's the radar thing.
Sightline issues.
Yeah.
And also, the fact that speed limits are driven by state policy based on how fast people are going, rather than what we'd like to see, how fast we'd like to see them going in our community. We can't lower speed limits unless they're already going under the speed limit.
I had a bill that lowered the speed limit. It didn't get a hearing.
I'm not surprised.
You know, and I tried to explain that to everybody. Well, you can speed in any neighborhood you want to because police can't pull you over for anything. And they might hit you for reckless driving, but they can't give you a speeding ticket. Nobody really understands that.
Stop sign running, that's about anything that could...
Yeah.
Do you have anything you want to ask Jonathan?
I can tell you that this is a problem over in Oconee County. I've heard from the officials over there as well that they have issues with it, and the state recently raised the speed limit on a bunch of rural roads, which caused a lot of consternation. So if it helps you feel a little bit better, you're not alone.
We have a lot of company, yeah. Spencer, do you have some other things?
Just one. I think on number eight, y'all, we can get rid of that monument out there on, I just want to point out a way to do it. I mean, how much money did y'all spend out of our budget to fix that thing a couple of years ago?
Twenty, thirty grand.
About 25.
25,000?
I think so.
So doesn't the law state the safety or the preservation of the monument? Seems to me like if you already spent 25,000 on that monument, and you want to safely preserve that thing in the future, that moving it somewhere where there's not, how many, what's the traffic count on that street right there? 25,000 a day, probably?
More than that. More than that, yeah.
I mean, I would say that you guys have a very valid safety and preservation argument for this, according to the state statute, and I would move it, and I would dare the state to come say one word about it. I want to see y'all make bold decisions on this thing.
Thank you.
That is extremely important, and you have the ability to do it, and y'all need to do it. Another thing I'd like to say is I'd love to see some action on the Anti-Discrimination Commission get put together as soon as possible, because these incidents may not be being reported to y'all, but they're going on downtown over and over again, and I hear about them in the work that I do daily, and I think it's another important thing that this city needs, and the people of this city deserve that. Thank you.
Anybody else? Guys, thank y'all for coming. And before we move on, and I'm going to move down to one of the desks where we can use the screen up here, and those of you who are on the end, a couple of you can take those seats so they can see better. But before we move to the next item, I would like to recognize we have two legislators elect here, Marcus Wheatower and Houston Gaines. Would y'all just stand up so everybody can get your faces in their head, because you'll be the one sitting up here next time around? So, thank y'all for joining us, and thank you guys for being here, too.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
And thank you for the work you do, because I know how thankless it is. It was in my family for a while, and it's not just the legislative session. Y'all work every day of the year.
Spencer.
I know you can do better than the ones usually sitting there.
I can do that right away.
It is nice. It's real nice.
And the next item on our agenda is the Inclusion and Equity Task Force Report, and Deborah Lonan is going to do the presentation of this one.
Good evening. I am here this evening along with the Housing and Community Development staff, and we have at least one member of the task, two members of the task force present this evening. And so it is my pleasure to present this finding and this report to you this evening. Our purpose is to present the final reports of the Mayor's Task Force on Inclusion and Equity. You will see it referred to throughout the document in this slide as the Mayor's Task Force or just Task Force. We will also present supporting research by Athens Clark County staff, and then we will present the recommendation. The active remaining members of the task force are listed on the left side. We also have ex-official members, Dr. Demond Means, Clark County School District Superintendent, and Dr. Michelle Cook, UGA Vice Provost of Diversity and Inclusion and Strategic University I will go through the history a little bit, just to be certain that there is complete understanding as to how we got to this point, so it's not my style typically to read to you, and I know you've had an opportunity to review this, but I do want to put a good bit of the history on the record. In January of 2016, Mayor Dentson signed a resolution, and that resolution, along agreed upon also by Mayor Commission, condemned discriminatory practices in Athens Clark County. It also directed the manager and the attorney to study and make recommendations to the Mayor Commission on furthering inclusion and equity in... Mayor Commission on furthering inclusion and equity in Athens Clark County. And then in July of 2016, the Government Operations Committee voted unanimously to recommend that the mayor and commission adopt revisions to the alcoholic beverage ordinance. In November of that same year, the mayor directed, or Mayor Commission directed, the manager and the attorney to explore ways to create a more inclusive and welcoming community through the creation of a government-appointed and Operation Citizen Human Relations Committee. Additionally, in June of the following year, the manager delivered the report that was titled "A Recommended Approach for Creating a Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Plan for Athens Clark County," and that report was delivered to Mayor Commission and made accessible to the community. On July 5th of 2015, the mayor appointed originally fifteen residents of Athens Clark County to serve on the mayor's task force on inclusion and equity. Now, some of those initial appointees are still on that slide that I showed previously of active members and some are not. The task force has worked diligently and worked through September of this year to create an inclusion and equity plan. We started in September 2017 and had our initial meeting, and the task force received the mayor's charge. The mayor was present at that meeting. We also went over a memo provided by the county attorney, and the county manager was also present. In October of last year, we had a presentation on economic development by then-Department Director Ryan Moore. And the purpose of that presentation, along with the others that you'll see on this slide, was to provide facts because a lot of us were operating on misconceptions and stereotypes. And so for the task force to be successful, it was important that we were, we were building a foundation on facts and not just misconceptions. And then in November of last year, we developed the task force scope because the mayor had given us some liberty to develop the scope and maybe narrow it as needed. We then in December met and developed an RFP so that we could attract a good facilitator to help direct us and we wouldn't just have meetings based on emotions. In January of 2018, this year, we reviewed that proposed RFP. And then in February, we had a presentation by Dr. Means so we could get the same basic fundamental information about the Clark County School District. In March of this year, there was a presentation by Annalee Singh of UGA, and she focused primarily on diversity and equity and inclusion, started with some things about just defining it. What is diversity? What is equity? What is inclusion? What does it mean to you and what does it mean to our community? And what are steps that we can take to be successful in what we've been charged to do? In April of this year, there was a presentation by then-Chief Scott Freeman on crime and policing in Athens Clark County, yet another opportunity to get some basic information and fundamental grounds upon which we built. And then in May, June, July, and September, the task force met and we were led at that point by the facilitator, Colleen Capper, Dr. Colleen Capper of ICS Equity LLC. This is what we were charged with. The mayor's task force on inclusion and equity is charged with working with a staff liaison, which would be me, and a then-to-be-named facilitator or consultant to develop strategies and ultimately a plan to make Athens Clark County a more welcoming and inclusive community. This was the proposed scope on the left, and on the right were our desired outcomes. We did want a facilitator that would help lead the effort and ultimately provide a written plan with some emphasis on economic mobility. Through that process, we were able to collectively provide ten task force recommendations. These recommendations were voted upon by task force members, or at least those task force members who were present and active at that particular meeting. And the recommendations as reported in the report that was attached to the documents that you received are worded by the facilitator. So what we've done with the following slides is ACC staff has gone through and read through each recommendation and then researched to find some best practices and some communities that have actually implemented those practices so we can present those options to you today. Goal number one, create an Office of Equity and Inclusion with the title of director or officer. And similar efforts certainly exist throughout the nation, and those who do it best make it a holistic effort and they focus primarily on bringing together various parts of the community so that it's not just one aspect represented, but throughout the entire community. This could be a standalone office or it could be co-located within a department. It could be co-located within HCD. And specifically, if that were the route that Mayor Commission decided to take, it would actually contemplate the charter that specifically states that we are, this particular department is actually charged with addressing many of these needs. But it could also be a standalone organization, a standalone department. It would be charged with working with all departments, though, and specifically Leisure Services as a focus on youth, Police Department as a focus on citizen safety, HR as a focus on recruiting, Finance as a focus on procurement, Organizational Development as a focus on training, HCD as a focus on affordable housing, and Economic Development as a focus on prosperity. We would not be focused solely on race because if you were to speak with any of the task force members, the majority of our conversations were focused on race. But this particular goal wants to encompass race, color, national origin, religious beliefs, gender, sex, age, and disabilities. And then some recommended models of areas in the community that are doing this well include Fort Collins, Bellevue, and the City of Decatur right here in Georgia.
Can I ask how that was determined? Like how, for example, in Fort Collins, was it determined that this model was working well for them?
So what we did was we took, we had a group. Now, this is outside of the task force. This is the staff. And we looked at the goal and said, what community has actually created an Office of Equity and Inclusion? And within that community, how successful is it based upon the actual residents of the community? So Fort Collins has been doing this for decades. Bellevue has also, and Decatur does it a little differently, and I know Commissioner Lincoln, several other commissioners have brought the City of Decatur to our attention through other meetings. So the determination is based upon satisfaction of the residents.
Okay.
And the success of the office and the fact that the office is still active and engaged.
Okay, but it wasn't like quantitatively measured at all in terms of, because I know later on you'll talk about...
Measurements?
Yeah.
Yes. Objective measurements are key. It's not just subjective.
Okay. And so those were considered for places like Fort Collins above you?
Yes.
And before you move on, Ms. Dickerson had her hand up.
Yeah, thanks, DeBora. So because I've been exposed to some of the conversations about this, I wanted, I was just kind of curious if, when you talk about strategic collaboration with Leisure Services, I know there's a group of disabled individuals in our community who are actively working to get people out of their homes in active roles, like, you know, playing basketball or just doing physical activities because typically that, you know, that keeps them withdrawn from society if they're not out. So I know our department, in particular Leisure Services, has worked to try to encourage that, and I didn't see that covered. I'd like to see that, you know, addressed as well as older individuals because again, I think it's the same thing if they're not out actively getting, you know, physically being fit, they'll withdraw from society. And so I didn't know if that was a discussion since you did hit on age and disability. I didn't see that really covered there, and I just wanted to make a point of hoping that that would be inclusive in that.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
As a matter of fact, Leisure Services has forged a new partnership with the Council on Aging and is offering more programs through them to the elderly. So yeah, they're not just focused on youth.
Okay. Well, and I know the Ayers Program, remind me what that stands for. Yeah, there's a local group called Ayers, and they do a lot of that kind of stuff. And I know Leisure Services over the last year has worked, or over the last two years has worked to create opportunities for people who are disabled to come out and get active, you know, be physically involved in activities in the community. I just wanted to make sure it was captured, that we're not just focusing on youth because I think that's a big piece of overall health of this community and not just, you know, especially the age and the disabled, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Goal number two, discrimination. Provide information, resource referral, or process for addressing discrimination complaints in Athens Clark County. And here we've given the example of the City of Eugene, Oregon. It's important for us, and it was important for the staff, to focus on whatever limitations we have under our state statute and our state legislation because some examples that were contemplated are from states that may not be as limited. And we try to be very conscious of what we are allowed to do legally and stay within those lines. And in the City of Eugene, the Human Rights and Neighborhood Involvement Office, in essence, fields reports and concerns and complaints. And so complaints that are concerning the government specifically can be handled in-house by the government. But concerns about non-government departments or private parties then would have to be referred to the appropriate resources. And it was important during our conversations with the task force or the task force conversations that we acknowledged that we would not have police powers. And that did require some fleshing out. And Mr. Berryman's memo to us at that very first meeting did help establish some of the limitations. The third goal is to create an Athens Clark County Government Equity and Inclusion Citizen Advisory Board that would be established by ordinance with bylaws. And the reason that the task force had the "established by ordinance" and "bylaws" was a concern for longevity and just making certain that this particular Citizen Advisory Board could outlive any particular administration. And the best practice is, of course, for the advisory committee to be representative of the community and for it to be meant to further diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts that have been identified by the county. And the advisory board would not be a body that was responsible for judicial or investigative functions, but rather it would be to establish a discrimination complaint referral process, as I stated before. And again, some models included Virginia Beach, I think that's Oleth, in Kansas, Bellevue in Washington, and again, the City of Decatur in Georgia. Yes, ma'am.
So I guess the obvious question is, how do you go about identifying what is representative of the community? I mean, like, do you have two that are, I mean, two that are black, two that are white, two that are 65 or older? I mean, how do you, how is that done in these communities?
And so it varies. And sometimes they could, I know with some communities, they could be appointed from Mayor Commission, some could be appointed by various organizations within the community. The people certainly would have to have a say. There is no set formula, and that is some things that we would have to work out and further research. But in each of these recommended models, there is a process. And so we would have to determine if that process is feasible for Athens Clark County and if it would fit our community. But there are various styles.
Well, and you know, DeBora, because you participated on the steering committee, the Envision Athens effort, what we did in our situation was we looked, we got demographic information on the community, including geographic information. You know, it wasn't just everybody in the specific vicinity of, you know, the city hall. It was, you know, countywide, which I hope is also going to be considered in this, but should this be something that's created. But I think that's a good start because then you look at what do we actually look like? And then you have your, you know, you have your formula. You know, I need so many between 18 and 25, or I need, you know, so many, you know, that are, have a racial identity of this or a color of this or a gender of that. And I mean, it's worked, it worked well for us. So, you know, we have done it before. It is a possible model that could be replicated in something like that should the commission decide to move forward.
The most successful communities certainly have, the most successful communities that have this type of advisory board have advisory boards that are reflective of the community and not just minorities, not just particular segments, but reflective of the entire community. So that is correct. Goal number four is to create Community Equity and Inclusion Partnership Council. And while examples of this particular goal was a little challenging to find, we really just needed to look right here at home. Envision Athens already exemplifies this. We already have the Oversight Committee that includes institutional and community partners, such as what you've already described, Commissioner Dickerson. The group is already representative of the community's many diverse interests, including participation by community members and institutional partners. So not just the government, but our institutional partners, our private partners, our nonprofit partners. Yes, sir.
Just thinking, DeBora, about the kind of relationship between the group of Envision and Goal Three and then the group in Goal Four. Would you imagine a model in which Envision Athens, as a steering committee, serves as this body and then the Citizen Advisory Board makes a regular report to them or something like that?
So I think there are many ways that we can make this work in Athens Clark County, though I can, I cannot imagine making this work without the participation and full involvement of Envision Athens. Because from my understanding and recollection, the goal was to have Envision Athens continue forward for at least 20 years, right? And so I think Envision Athens' participation and maybe even oversight, for lack of a better word to come to my mind right now, would be key and especially helpful. So yes, I would see a partnership or collaboration in some way between Envision Athens and the Citizen Advisory Board.
Did I see any other hands?
Yeah, I just wanted clarification about what the specific functioning of this particular body would be.
Yes, we really delved into that. We really looked as to what would this council do. This council, from the contemplation of the task force committee, would actually be an opportunity and a voice for not just citizens, because that's the Citizens Advisory Board, but the inner workings of those agencies that we will need to partner with. The inner workings of Athens Clark County Government, the university, Envision Athens, our nonprofits, our longstanding partners, the Hospital of Georgia Power, so on and so forth. An opportunity for them to partner with us and also have a say. And so collaboratively between our partners and the citizens and the government coming together and being able to work on those issues.
Got you. So those were, oh, did you want to add something?
I do. So these would be where we would have a space where each partner's talking about their own equity efforts back in their own organization. So we're kind of comparing notes and, you know, what's the school district doing? What's the university doing? You know, that's, I think that's what it was intended, the way that I read it.
So we have the group of citizens and we have the group of our partners, all working collaboratively for the same efforts. But someone has to be able to go back and report and say, here are the decisions we're making, here are the efforts we want to put in place. And so those would be the liaisons for those partners.
Okay.
Goal number five is the objective measurement portion. This is to establish a basic equity accountability system. So this is in fact, how do we measure success? How do we know we're headed in the right direction? How do we know that this effort is progressing towards its anticipated and intended goals? And so it would be to create an online performance dashboard with specific measurable goals that are relevant to our community. We've not identified those goals because it wasn't for the task force to identify solely, but to do so with the community. And we found a great model organization with the City of Boston that's doing this work. They are part of What Works City, which we are a member of, and I think it would give us access to some of that key information and the ability to create or maybe replicate a similar system. But it would be for those objective measurements.
And this again, in case I missed it, was based on the objective measurements that were used in other communities.
Some from other communities, and some may be very particular to us. We don't have those. We've contemplated what those measurement tools would be and those goals, and we don't want to have too many. But we also want to have enough to where we're able to go back and determine if we're progressing. So some ideas that were thrown out just very generally, and remember, these were ideas from staff. So the task force agreed that there should be some sort of accountability system, but the additional work that staff did said we may need to look at different aspects of poverty. We may need to look at educational factors, graduation rates, but we've not determined that because there's a lot more work that would have to go into determining what would work here. Goal number six is to create Equity and Inclusion Leadership Team within Athens Clark County Government comprised of department heads and managers. And so before we had the Citizen Advisory Board, we also have our partners. This is specific to Athens Clark County Government. It includes both leadership team and employee liaison. Someone has to be able to go back and take the information, take the steps, take the efforts, take the suggestions and goals back to each department. And then it would advise the manager's office on improvements in processes and operations. And again, these are best practices. It varies from community to community, and implementing these practices in Athens Clark County would require looking at our specific needs. So these are just communities that seem to be doing it well. So these are just communities that seem to be doing it well, Fort Collins again, and Goal number seven is minority improvements in Athens-Clark County. Advanced leadership, employment, and promotion opportunities within Athens-Clark County Government to underrepresented groups within the recruitment and hiring process. So we did receive some assistance here from HR, and we know that there's a current Equal Opportunity Employment Plan that's a federally required plan, and that report should be enhanced and operationalized to address gaps. So we have some work to do, undoubtedly. And so we would need to flesh this out. We also need to focus on recruitment, testing and evaluation, selection, promotion, and seeing what we can do that other communities have been doing or may be doing to better us. Now, this, this seems to be a struggle across the board nationally, but we do have some steps already in place in our HR. They just probably need to be extended.
I am not familiar with the Equal Opportunity Employment Plan, and I was wondering if you could speak a little bit more in detail about what that is, if anyone else watching at home might also have that question.
So I may just need to ask if it would be okay to post it. I know it's specific requirements. Mr. Hale, the director of HR, would be the one to have the details as to how it applies specifically. And I don't want to generalize, especially because Mr. Berryman has left. And I'm very familiar with the Equal Opportunity Employment, but I don't know the specifics of our plan.
Gotcha.
Goal number eight is to expand youth development. And while Commissioner Dickerson pointed out that we address youth specifically and maybe not some other sectors of the community, we do want this plan to be inclusive. But the task force was very adamant in acknowledging that our youth need some special care and attention and some special programs in place. And so we have three examples here of some models that seem to be working well. One in Chattanooga, Tennessee, another in St. Louis, Missouri, and then the Youth Career Cafe in Hampton, Newport, in Hampton, Virginia. And so these are just some ideas of things that work and work well and that our Leisure Services Department thinks can be implemented here in conjunction with some other departments and collaborative efforts with private partners and certainly with other departments within Athens-Clark County Government. Goal number nine is diverse business ownership. And here, the specific goal is to support current efforts by Athens-Clark County Government, efforts by Envision Athens, and other entities that are engaged in efforts to increase diverse business ownership for African Americans, Latino community, other individuals of color, women-owned businesses, businesses owned by those with disabilities, and most importantly, to increase the pool of minority applicants for Athens-Clark County Government contracts. And the wording, the specific groups of people that were identified was very intentional from the task force. So while we want to be inclusive, there is a great desire to focus specifically on these groups of people and in increasing the minority pool of applicants. Goal number 10 is to have community forums and events across differences. And differences there just means diversity and our, providing opportunities for people who represent Athens' very diverse population, coming together, sharing ideas, having an opportunity to grow, to create distinct action items with shared responsibility by the local government and the community. And there are some communities that are doing this well. As a matter of fact, this particular goal was probably the easiest to find examples for. So bringing people together collectively, exposing one another to differences within ourselves, within our communities, only to find that we actually have more in common than not, is something that should be fairly easy to do. And so examples of cities that are doing that well are the city of Decatur, Kingston County in Washington, Colorado Springs in Colorado, and Bexley in Ohio. There are many others, but these are just a few. So these are things that were recommended by the task force, but there are some things that we're already doing well in Athens-Clark County. We have some ongoing efforts that are already improving relationships amongst our diverse groups of citizens. The Citizens Government Academy, the Great Promise Partnership with Clark County School District, Leisure Services Summer Camp Scholarships, the Network for Southern Economic Mobility, as difficult as that work and that charge has been, it is already opening our eyes and giving us additional opportunities. Athens Wellbeing 2.0, the second round, the Clark County Police Department's Community Cookouts, the Georgia Initiative for Community Housing, the Entrepreneurship Symposium, which I don't know anyone here, I doubt that you would know much about because it's an ongoing effort right now that Envision Athens is spearheading and has pulled together various private partners, various departments of Athens-Clark County Government and nonprofits to host an entrepreneurship symposium for small businesses that are emerging and small businesses that are already established in February of next year. So the date is there, we have a location, we have some very specific goals to help the people either grow or establish their small businesses. And the Small Business Development is, SBDC is going to also be a part of this process and work with us. This is anticipated to be annually, so that's something, and we are specifically targeting small businesses that are struggling to establish or struggling to grow. And we also have the Revolving Loan Fund through the Housing and Community Development Department, which also focuses on helping small businesses thrive and grow here in Athens-Clark County. But these are just a few of some ongoing efforts that are in existence in our county. Here's some things that we could do. We could have a diversity climate survey of Athens-Clark County Government staff. We could have an inclusion and diversity training for all of Athens-Clark County staff, partnership with the Chamber of Commerce or a stronger partnership with the Chamber of Commerce, partnership with Northeast Georgia Business Alliance, which focuses specifically on African American businesses, and have more active recruitment for boards and commissions. Our next steps include, on December 4th, the voting meeting, asking you to vote to accept the task force plan, and then to take further steps. The Athens-Clark County staff would take additional steps for examining more potential actions. And then going forward to program required resources in the FY '20 budget.
Good job, Deborah. Ms. Link?
Yeah, so in looking through the report, you know, I was looking for, I was looking for something, I was looking for social capital, evidence of the importance of social capital in improving diversity, equity, and inclusion in communities. And I only found it mentioned once, I believe on page 20. But you do talk, there is also a mention of the need for a multicultural community center. I would argue that there's not a need for a multicultural community center, but I'd argue for, that all our community centers need to be multicultural. There's a lot of very new research out there on social capital and how important it is in communities and community engagement and flourishing democracy in general. And we have very few of those places. I mean, the only place I can think of in all of Athens is the West Broad Garden Market. And I feel like as a government, if we can promote more spaces like that, and one way to really increase, to change attitudes and to foster a community that is open to diversity is to diversify our neighborhoods. And that's how we diversify our schools and ensure ongoing integration of our schools. And there's no talk in here about addressing zoning and land use as a means of diversifying and making for more equitable, an equitable community and being more inclusive in our community. So I would challenge this body to take a look at our zoning and land use plan from that perspective. And also, there's almost no mention of UGA and the role that UGA plays in this community. You know, UGA students are about one-fifth of our population, and this whole movement and this whole conversation was triggered by incidents of discrimination that specifically had to do with businesses that catered to UGA students. You know, in the 25 years I've been in Athens, the downtown scene has changed immensely. We didn't have bars named after Confederate generals. So I would say we need to have a sit-down with the University of Georgia and ask them what they're doing to ensure that their incoming student population, because they change out constantly, and they are a different demographic than they were 15 years ago. But I feel like we need to work hand in glove with the University of Georgia to ensure that our goals in creating a diverse and inclusive and equitable community are also their goals.
And if I may just add to that, Commissioner Link, Dr. Cook with the university, as well as Annalise Singh, both participated with the task force in one form or another. And when we got to goal number four, the creating a community equity and inclusion partnership, the task force actually started naming various organizations, institutions, partnerships in the community. And naturally, UGA was named, school district was named, the chamber was named, various institutions were named. And just the way I think it was presented in the report was that rather than listing everyone, it just came down to just including those groups that are here in the community and those that we already work with. And I know that Envision Athens is already working with many of our institutions. So I think in addition to the university, there are probably many other organizations or institutions that we need to work with, but we certainly did discuss that.
Anyone else? Mariah, and then Kelly.
I've talked so much, do you want to go first, Kelly?
Sure. Just, I guess I'd make note that, I mean, even the phrase "social capital" isn't included kind of in the description of some of the bulleted items. The Citizen Academy, specifically, in a big way, Great Promise Partnership, and a lot of the outgrowths of GIG, Georgia Initiative for Community Housing, sort of would help emphasize that. And I do agree that we've got some work to do on zoning land use and residential opportunity. And I think all of that can be couched in this work, and certainly that's, that's our job. And do want to make note that I'll be recommending kind of funding for a dedicated office of inclusion and diversity for FY '20, and so that we have collective support for that.
Mariah?
Yeah, thank you. I, I just wanted to add that, I think, that understanding of historical context and the reasons why we have the problems that we do, the reasons why we need a diverse and equity inclusion task force in the first place, prior to Mayor Denson signing a resolution condemning discrimination, is really important. We have to understand what kinds of problems we're dealing with and where they've come from in order to properly tackle them, both as like a body sitting here in this building, as well as when the various committees and councils move forward in the work that they want to do. And so I'd be happy to work with you all between now and December to see how we can incorporate some of that into the final agenda item or otherwise present some language myself.
Thank you.
Yeah, I want to point out that age is another, another factor in inclusion. And I think it's incumbent on us and in particularly, in particular, leisure services and their planning, that, that retired people and aged people should be considered in planning for We don't, we don't see much of that yet. We leave it up to other people to provide for aging people or retired people with their level of physical activity and the kind of events, the kinds of activities that they want to participate in. So I think we need to focus on that as well.
Back, Mr. Harret.
Was there, in talking about different groups, was there any discussion about veterans? Because we have a veterans court now, we have some veterans that come back from war zones with PTSD and perhaps feel isolated in the community. Was there any discussion in your group?
No, sir, not that I can recall.
Would that fall under disability?
We...
I don't think so, but I'm not sure.
No, not specifically, Commissioner Harret, but I do know that part of our reasoning for saying that we would also focus on race, color, national origin, religious beliefs, gender, sex, age, and disabilities is because we knew we were probably going to, we wouldn't be able to include everyone in our discussions. And again, I have to tell you that we did focus primarily on race because that's where the majority of the conversations led. But we acknowledge that race would not be the sole focus. So veterans is, I'm noting, I'm making notes now.
And Mariah, I went to the Oak County Hills Veterans Ceremony yesterday, and we had a very good speaker that talked about veterans returning to school and how they felt like fish out of water because they're in many, if they've been in service, they've come out, they have educational benefits, they have the GI Bill, but they're significantly older and have very different needs from students. And so even, you know, once they're in school, they feel like, you know, they feel not a part of anything. So, so that's, that's a very important group to look at. And I can get that gentleman's name, but I think we've got lots of resources here for that.
Yes, ma'am. Mariah?
One last question, and kind of piggybacking off of Commissioner Harret's question about the scope of the recommendations. Sexual orientation is supposed to be included within the categories of consideration?
It is, yes.
Yeah, okay. Just wondering.
While we're piling on with people who need services, I think also in the area of disabilities, it could be much more, much more of a nuance with that. And that is people who have emotional disabilities that may not be obvious. They may not be obvious to our police department, for example. And so I would like to include in this discussion at some point the need for our police force and others to be trained to recognize an emotional issue when they come upon it and how to, how to handle it, how to de-escalate it. And it would be nice if we had a diversion center where these people who can't be left, can't be left alone for that time anyway, while they're in crisis, can, to go get treatment or someplace safe rather than a jail or the emergency room.
And I think there is something in the works with the courts and...
Yeah, there is some work going on.
Working toward that. And I will give a shout-out to somebody while we're talking about this. Our police department has a program, and I believe it's required of all officers, and I actually went through the training with them, and I was so unbelievably impressed. And it was called Fair and Equitable Policing. And it was just an absolutely amazing experience and an eye-opener for everybody that was there and when I was there, including me.
I would just like to see, be sure that the police are practicing it each and every day, because I have seen at least one incident where it could have been handled much better.
Monday morning quarterbacking is always, that's...
Right, right. But I just don't think this particular officer quite understood what was going on.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? Mariah, thank you very much. And I want to thank the task force. I see one of our members, who else?
And Mr. Smith.
Oh, hey, Fred, yeah. So with the two of y'all just stand up, be recognized. This is Jeb Bradbury and Fred Smith, and thank y'all very much for being here. And a lot, a lot of time and effort went into this, so thank you all.
Can I go to the next one?
Yes, ma'am. You can go ahead with the next item because that one's yours too. And this one is the Athens Habitat for Humanity Home Application. And DeBora's going to be our presenter on this as well.
The purpose of this presentation is to review the consolidated plan, explain the home application review process, review the home proposal and funding recommendation, and review the remaining schedule. With any activity that, that comes from or involves federal funding, there must be a consolidated plan. Athens-Clark County does have a consolidated plan, and we use that as an assessment of affordable housing and community development needs and to assess market conditions. Our home application process, in essence, right now involves HCD receiving applications on a first-come, first-served basis. It's contingent upon the remaining home allocation funds, and that process will change in FY ' '21. We'll have a fixed, a fixed schedule of time, much like the CDBG process. But for now, that is our process. And our staff reviews the applications. We complete our home rating tools per the HUD guidelines, and then we base our recommendations on that objective tool. Right now, we have 480,000...
Right now, we have $480,744 minus the $100-plus thousand for administration and planning. This is for both FY '18 and '19, remembering that we received FY '18 funding a little late from the federal government. And that leaves $380,203 for the FY '19 home allocation. To date, we have received four home applications for FY '18 and '19. And the last time I was before you, you awarded and approved the recommendation for land trusts totaling $524,662 for the first three home projects that we received. We have now received a project proposed by Habitat for Humanity. And Habitat for Humanity is seeking $120,000 in home funds to build two single-family houses located at 175 New Hope Drive and 180 New Hope Drive here in town. And so here are the specifics of that project. These are called kind of tiny homes, not tiny, but kind of tiny homes. And kind of because it's not as tiny as what a tiny home is and kind of because it had to fit within Clark County's requirements. So these homes will be between 600 and 800 square feet. And Habitat estimates selling the one-bedroom for $70,000 to $75,000, which is considered affordable for our area and is mandatory under home requirements under HUD. And then the second home, which would be, the second kind of tiny home, would be a two-bedroom and the estimated sale price of that would be $85,000 to $90,000. Both are located on New Hope Drive. And the total cost for the project is $317,109, but Habitat is only asking for $120,000. And if you remember from my last presentation, we typically get application requests asking for a huge portion or a larger portion of the total project cost, but that's not the case here.
DeBora, before we move forward, I have a question that I'd written to myself when I was going through this. And this refers to these homes being sold. And I know that's the case with the land trust and with Habitat for Humanity. Is there any possibility, and I don't know how this process works right now, I know how the process works of them building the homes, interacting with the new homeowners, but the funds that are generated when a property is sold? Because it occurred to me that if that could be returned to ACC through possibly your department, but we are looking for ways to have an affordable home funding bucket of money, that that would be a way to replenish that bucket of money as revolving, you know, as money's come back in through sales, if that could go into a fund for, to create more housing. And I don't know whether that's a possibility or not.
With HUD regulations for home, if the properties are sold within the affordability period, those proceeds have to be put back into affordable homes or affordable housing programs. They don't necessarily have to come back to HCD. So for example, if land trusts were to sell one of those properties that we discussed before or even one of these kind of tiny homes, the proceeds have to go back into another affordable housing project. It wouldn't be able to just be used for whatever the organization desired. We don't typically recoup those properties because we would turn around and give them back to the agencies that would build the homes.
And do we get a reporting of that as those are sold? And when you said during the eligibility timeframe, what if they are sold outside that timeframe?
We're only required to maintain or keep maintenance of the statuses during the affordability period and that ranges up to 20 years depending on how much home funds are put into the project. And so it is a responsibility of each agency to report back to us when those homes are sold. And very recently, as of last year, I started going back through our inventory of properties that are still within the affordability period to make certain that we are on top of what's happening with those funds. But I will tell you that last, no, this summer, housing authorities sold a property and contacted us to say we've sold this property. In that particular case, it was not sold to a low or moderate income resident and so HCD did recoup those properties, those funds. We then must now put that money back into the community specifically for affordable housing projects. Yes, ma'am.
Good. So that's accomplishing what I was talking about with a little bit different mechanism.
Right. Because it's HUD money, I wouldn't be able to recommend that we put it in general funds, but it does go back to serve the same anticipated purposes. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Melissa and then Mariah.
You said the affordability period is up to 20 years. What's the minimum period?
10 years typically. It depends on how much money we're putting in and there's a HUD formula, so it's not up to us. Depending on the total cost of the project, there's a formula we have to plug into. And for the most part, the projects that we see are 10 to 20 years. Athens Land Trust properties yielded a 15-year affordability period. But as you know, Athens Land Trust continues the affordability period well beyond 15 years.
So Athens Land Trust is the only housing partner that basically has a perpetual affordability for these properties?
Correct, current housing partner, yes.
And I apologize to those in the audience because when I'm asking questions, they're not hearing it through the mic and I'll try to do better.
And I should have probably repeated it, sorry.
That's all right. You ready to move on?
Oh, I have, yeah, yeah.
It's hard to see all over there.
And I'm also, I do a lot of this, my bad. So I have a question and really just because a lot of people in my district are extremely concerned about affordable housing, as you know, there's been a lot of community meetings about how we can increase our stock of affordable housing there. I was just wondering, kind of aloud and for people who might be watching at home, what your process is for going about, for site selection for projects like these?
So we don't select the sites. The agency selects the site, but we have to do an environment review on every single project that gets HUD money, every single project. Even our revolving loan funds have an environmental review. And so we have to go and make sure that the property is within, or that that particular area is focused on low to moderate income residents. In our consolidated, in our com-plan, we have determined that there are specific areas of focus for our community. This particular area is a revitalization area. So most of the applications we receive are in revitalization areas or areas of need. However, we don't tell the agencies where the homes must be built. Most of the agencies focus on areas of need. So specifically for site visits or site determinations, we don't play a role in that, but we do make certain that the funds are expanded to low to moderate income residents.
Ms. Link.
Yeah, you mentioned that these properties need to be built in areas that are identified as areas of low to moderate income. So if an organization did have property in, say, a middle-class, upper-middle-class neighborhood, they would not be allowed to use these funds to build housing in it?
Let me clarify and be very clear. The properties don't have to be identified in just low to moderate income areas. The funds must be expanded to service low to moderate income residents.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yes.
Because if we're talking about diversity and inclusion, we need to...
Absolutely, yes, yes. And we do consider though, if the purpose is to serve low to moderate income residents, then you have to look at the totality of the situation in the application. Will this home be easily accessible to transit? Will it have, you know, groceries or other services or amenities that need to be easily accessible? And so those things matter and most of our housing partners contemplate those needs and know that if funds are being spent specifically on low to moderate income residents, that's the HUD requirement, not Athens Clark County. That's the HUD requirement. So you have to consider all of those needs because in our rating tool, we're looking at all of these factors. It's not, does HCD like the application? Does it make you feel warm and fuzzy? There are objective measures upon which we consider before we determine our recommendation. Many of those come directly from HUD.
Yeah. Anybody else?
I'm just kind of curious. So we have the balance is $360,000 left. Is there any reason, I mean, this is a first-come, first-served right now, correct?
Right now, yes.
Is there any reason, any idea why we don't have people knocking down our doors trying to, I mean, get that money?
It's those factors. It's, there are a lot of requirements. You have to have capacity more than anything, the capacity to build these homes. You also need to have the capacity to sell them. So the home program has a lot more stringent requirements than CDBG. So 12 months from the time we start contracting, the clock is running. And so if you build the homes but you're unable to sell them, now you have a different set of concerns and rules that apply to you. So it's not that the need isn't great, it's that the requirements and the capacity and the funding issues that come with this and the reporting. The reporting is intensive and some agencies do in fact determine that the reporting efforts aren't worth their while. But we do have committed housing partners here and they determine that it is worth their while.
Okay. All ready for her to move on?
Okay. Well, I think that finishes yours, doesn't it? Sorry, does it?
Well, it's just a couple more slides unless you want me to stop.
Oh, yeah, a couple more slides, I'm sorry.
So right now...
Got my question answered and just quit.
Yes, ma'am. Right now, we have $380,000, as I stated. If in fact you accept our recommendation for $120,000, that will leave the $260,000 for the next housing agency or partner to request. Now, that money can roll over. The remaining $260,000 can roll over into FY '20 and then we'd be able to add to whatever we receive from the federal government for the next fiscal year.
Actually, ma'am, I actually have one more question. So could those funds be used for a larger project or do they have to be independent? Could they be rolled into some other project that might be going on in the community in the future?
It can be a larger project.
Interesting. Okay, thank you.
Columbia Brookside, Columbia Brookside had home funds in it.
Yes. Alice.
I just want to express my excitement for this project and the kind of tiny homes. I live surrounded by kind of tiny homes, most of which were built over 100 years ago. Once upon a time, this was like a very common form of housing stock. And, you know, I live next door to, I think, about a 700-square-foot home, a two-bedroom home, and across the street from several 800 or 900-square-foot three-bedroom homes and then around the corner from five shotgun shacks. And these are homes that, I mean, the shotgun shacks even have entire families in them. So, you know, they're a form of housing that is very much in demand and is almost never built these days. And they're able to be built in small pockets of land. So I hope moving forward in this community, we can make it a lot easier to build these and identify areas where they can be built by right in communities where they don't necessarily have this kind of housing. Because, you know, I feel like we need to strive for diverse neighborhoods that accommodate citizens of all incomes and all races. So I'm excited to see this move forward.
Well, I can tell you that there are two Athens Clark County residents who are also excited because Habitat has already identified potential purchasers for these properties.
I'm sure. I could probably hand them a dozen more.
Okay. And lastly, we are asking that you will vote and accept this recommendation for the Athens Habitat for Humanity. And then in January and going forward and next year, we will initiate contracting with Athens Area Habitat for Humanity.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And thank you, DeBora.
Thank you, ma'am.
Is Drew here? Yeah. Want to take a break? Got my key?
I shouldn't need it. Yeah, yeah.
The hair's getting longer. I'll need to start to grow the mustache out a little bit more.
Okay, so our Transportation and Public Works Director, Drew Raisler, is going to go through a stormwater utility fee review with us. And also it covers level of service.
Yeah.
We're ready when you are, Drew.
Well, there's plenty of water.
Is there a staff member up there?
Yes.
Yeah. That's an expert.
This is Chloe, she's about a month old now. It's exciting that this is on TV, but I've been told that my children are watching Dumbo instead of this, so.
It'll be rerun on Sunday.
I could make a comment.
I have that on.
I'm not sure when these will be rerun.
Something about they have that opportunity every day.
My mouth is full of something else.
I will turn this over very quickly to Todd and then wrap up at the end. This is a repeat from a work session that we had a couple of months ago talking about the Phase 1 of the stormwater utility fee review process. And there was a lot to digest, a lot to wrap our arms around. I think that that presentation itself, just in and of itself, was about an hour long. There's a lot of other stuff on the agenda that night. So this is in cycle to be voted on in the November-December cycle. So this is an abbreviated version. We think we can do it faster than an hour this time. And we really want to kind of get through a lot of the content because you've seen that before and really settle in on the very end and start talking about recommendations, particularly when it comes to capital funds. So with that, Todd Stevenson, our Stormwater Division Administrator.
Well, good evening. As Drew mentioned, I'm just going to run through this presentation. You've seen it back in September when Mr. Bill Zibert from Stantec, Stantec is helping us with this stormwater fee review, he ran through this. Some of the background photos have been changed, but other than that, it's pretty much the same. Phase 2 of this study may be more interesting to many people than Phase 1 and Stantec is already underway on that. The Phase 1 forms the basis for the Stormwater Enterprise Fund investments that we've been making. And that's the foundation for everything that comes afterwards. We'll be seeking public input. I know a lot of people are interested in Phase 2, it has to do with the stormwater fee and credits. We'll be seeking public input in the coming year, early in the coming year. And those dates have not been set yet, but we'll get that information out when they are. When we look at the history of the fee, we see that it's intertwined with our Clean Water Program, our obligations under the Clean Water Act. From about 2002 to 2005, an extraordinary amount of work was done in regard to not only setting up the fee, but setting up the specifics of our stormwater quality management program. So this is the second history slide, kind of brings us up to date. One of the things I want to note is that, and I think this was fairly unusual in the way we set up our fee, was that at that time, the property tax was actually reduced. So maybe no one remembers that, but that did happen. So with this slide, it shows on the right side there a map of impaired waterways, 69 miles. Could also easily show a map here of all the infrastructure, the pipes, manholes, inlets, things like that, because those are the two main parts of the program that was authorized by Mayor and Commissioner back in 2004, 2005. And we kind of refer to the first part as the quantity part, the maintenance of, and keeping those pipes open, inlets clean, all that, ditches, roadside ditches operating, and then the Clean Water Act, the water quality part of it. So this is logical time to kind of step back and think about what we're doing. Are there additional services that make sense to be offered? The fee has been in place since 2005. And the capital needs are kind of manifesting themselves mainly in the form of rusted-out So again, the two parts, kind of the first part, the maintenance of all the stormwater infrastructure that we have, and the second part, the Clean Water Act obligations, duties. That's what we're doing now and that's what we were authorized to do and that's what we've been doing since 2005. So what if we increased our level of service? What might that look like? What are some of the specifics? The first one, contract maintenance. Landscape Management and Streets and Drainage does maintain our detention basins and bi-retention facilities on public land. There are some things that are beyond the scope of what they can do. And so some of these categories are probably more in the needs of, would be nice to have as opposed to needs, and some are closer to really we should have them. The camera truck and the televising crew, and that kind of goes back to these rusted-out pipes that are unfortunately surprising us because we don't have as good an asset management program as we should. And so this would really help us with that. Tell us what's out there. The back truck, we have two back trucks and each one really should have two people. We have a total of two people. And not only do they operate the back trucks, but they go around and do inspections of inlets and pipes and things like that to make sure they're open and they do that, kind of get to all the stormwater infrastructure on... on a yearly cycle. And then also, we'd like to work them into doing stormwater mapping for us.
Todd, can I interrupt you and ask something?
Yes.
The vacuum trucks, are those to clean out the intake-
Yes, I meant, I'm glad you mentioned that.
For leaves and things like that?
They can clean out, they're designed to clean out pipes. And they can clean out inlets as well. Yep, catch basins, yep. That's what they're designed for.
And what kind of things do they pull out of the pipes? Just trash? Is that-
Trash is one thing. It can be dirt, sediment, sand, whatever is in there, you know.
But they're primary for pipes, more than intake?
Yep.
Well, this time of year, you'll see the leaves starting to fall in there.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, good at getting those out.
Can they be used for vacuuming for leaves off streets and sidewalks and that kind of stuff? Or is it just for taking things out of-
That's a question. Yes, that's a good question.
Well, I mean, given the staff resources, those could be used for that purpose, but in this case, they're limited to the stormwater functions.
Yeah, and-
Well, I guess my question is, from a technological point of view, if you had enough staff, you could use those for getting leaves off sidewalks and piles of leaves that pile up? We just don't have the crew to do it. Or do you need a separate piece of equipment to do that?
If we had a separate program to pick up leaves, I think a different piece of equipment would be more appropriate. It could be used for that, but it's not really designed for that. So, the guys that clean up the inlets and all that, they may just be using rakes, you know, wheelbarrows. So, whatever works out, works out best. And Kevin Gentry at Streets and Drainage knows all of that better than I do. All right.
I think the next one to answer is yours. Yours may be the most-
So, a street sweep being, we do, we have Ralph? Yes.
Excuse me, Mariah has something for you.
Yes.
I was wondering if any of these jobs are done by inmates?
Yes, inmates do help currently with the vac truck crew.
Okay. How many?
I'm not sure. Yeah. And I don't know, we have, we do have inmates helping out on other crews as well. Yes. So, currently, we have two vac trucks that go around, and they do inspections as well as cleaning. So, each vac truck has an operator and an inmate on most days. So, the operator currently is managing, making sure that the inmates, that they're following all of the proper protocol there, as well as the inspections and the cleaning. We also have inmates that assist with animal pickup as well.
Got you. And are they at all compensated for this work?
They, I don't quite know the program very well as far as what their compensation is. I know that the corrections officers help provide those, make those available to us. I'd have to check with the warden on that.
But then, these numbers about level of service and how much, like, they'd need to be adjusted? Like, all those figures are calculated, assuming a wage for them or a free labor? Like, is that factoring at all into the numbers we're going to look at?
Their compensation does not come from the stormwater program.
Okay.
So, that's not included in this. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Nick Smith.
Yeah, I think these are, these are inmates from the State Department of Corrections, right? Yes.
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 Yes, okay.
All right. Well, people know more about that than I do. All right. So, these are some of the things we could add. Here's another one. We do have a lot of stormwater customers who say, hey, I'm paying for this stormwater fee. Why don't you come out and fix this drainage problem on my property? And that has to do with the scope of the issue. I know that the houses that my wife and I have lived in over our lifetimes, they've all had drainage problems. And I'm crossing my fingers that I've fixed the drainage problem at the house we live in now, and our crawl space is dry. But when we did our survey, we found that 40% of the respondents said they had drainage problems at their houses. So, that translates to tens of thousands of properties and tens of millions of dollars. So, it's a matter of balancing cost versus service. That's the only issue that we're looking at there with dealing with all the private drainage issues.
Can I ask, I want to ask her. So, has staff identified? I mean, I know within my district, I've got a couple of areas where, you know, we have water that's being funneled directly into a catch basin, basically going on to someone's private property. Seems like to me, there's different levels of, you know, like, I may have, because I don't have curbs in my neighborhood, I have water that runs off the street from my neighbor that goes into my, you know, goes along, carves out a little spot. That seems like a different, you know, it seems like to me, there's different levels. And do we have, like, an inventory of, you know, like, a true, you know, where we're directing by way of a base, you know, some sort of catch basin, where we're directing water onto property versus where water just naturally flows because there is no, I mean, it just seems like to me, there's different, you know, it almost seems like there's more of a responsibility, you know, for us to address the ones where we're actually trying to direct it, to manage it, and we're directing it onto someone's property that may lead to a stream or whatever, versus where it's just, it's going, you know, we're not directing it, it just happens naturally. And at some point, you know, it happens, you know. But is there some inventory of that where we would know?
So, yes and no. We don't have an inventory of every private drainage easement in Athens Clark County. It's something that, when we have a particular issue come up, that we do research on that particular issue, find out what's going on, what responsibility we have in that. As far as this study, one, one of the very reasonable recommendations that I think that Stantec came forward with is the idea of us handling the zone of influence, as it's called. So, there's a particular definition in the Georgia Stormwater Management Manual that defines exactly how much distance from a pipe is the responsibility of that particular pipe. So, right now, when there's, just the situation that you laid out, I'm sure, a stormwater catch basin, a system, and then it outlets onto someone's private property. Based on our current level of service, we draw a hard line at the right-of-way and say, this is what we're approved for, this is what we're going to do. Anything beyond that hard line is really your responsibility as a private property owner to accept the stormwater that comes to you. Well, that's, it's a difficult thing to say when you're out there with someone, and it's raining, and you're in their yard, and they're pointing at the pipe that's kicking out water and causing erosion on their property. So, one of the recommendations that we have in the report that will come forward in this agenda cycle is to, is it- Bill, you may know, Todd, do you know that five times the diameter, six times the diameter of the pipe, that distance beyond the pipe would then be our responsibility, regardless of whether or not-
It's on private-
It's on private property. Of course, we would still, if we're going to work on private property, we'd still get a right-of-entry. But then, we would take that responsibility as a recognition that, okay, our stormwater is going somewhere. And so, we think we have a responsibility to take care of that.
Mr. Nick Smith?
I think it's worth pointing out that there's really two levels here. The one of them is where there is an easement, which means it's showing up in the plat that the developer or the home builder has registered that easement. It's still on private property, but it is a stormwater easement. And specifically, the homeowner, the property owners, have to maintain that easement. And then there's a situation where there is no easement, but stormwater is going on to the property. And that gets real fuzzy. But still, the homeowner is responsible for handling that problem, although they're not responsible for handling an easement, managing an easement. But the water is their problem.
One other point, sorry, Todd. Well, one other, and it's a great point. And there's even another one that we've come to know very recently on West Broad of an easement that has been dedicated to, then, in this particular case, the city of Athens back in the '70s, which was our responsibility. The pipe failed, and it ended up being about a $400,000 cost internally. Would have been far more private. So, it is a big problem. The issue of private easements is challenging. The best way that we were, to try to give you something that might get at that, was, the best option that we could come up with was the additional crew. But even that has limitations because one crew can only do so much in a given year. So, how do we decide what they do? And then, what responsibility do the homeowners have in that? And so, I think taking small steps, like the Zone of Influence, I think is a good first step. And I think something else that we're already doing that's difficult to really quantify is our education program. Cecile Riker does a great job putting on events and helping people understand exactly what stormwater is and how to manage stormwater. And that's really, two parts. One, the state makes us do it. And two, it's, I think, a good partnership with the community to kind of recognize that an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure.
At the risk of muddying the water, there's another issue that we have, which I saw today, where the developer has improperly, is improperly managing stormwater. They may be doing what their permit allowed them to do, the building permits allowed them to do, but it's insufficient already. And the houses just got built. You'll see this later, I'm sure. You'll see the complaint.
I saw it come through. We'll have our land development inspectors. And that's another aspect of the program.
That goes back to the permitting process and whether or not our standards are quite strong enough, even though they might meet state standards. Are they really adequate to protect the property owner in the case of them buying a home on a new development?
Sure. And that one, we'll dig in a little bit more. I'm not sure how long it's been since that property, that may still be under some form of a warranty that we can-
I believe it is, yeah.
But a great point, that's another piece that the Stormwater Program funds, is land development inspections. And it's something that is challenging oftentimes. They have a project they want to deliver. They're providing an economic development benefit to the community. So, they are constantly trying to balance that good with also making sure that they preserve the, that they prevent the muddy waters, just that you were referencing.
Thank you.
And before I move on to Melissa, because that's been a great concern of mine ever since I've understood it, is when we permit, particularly infill housing, and we create water problems that didn't exist for per homeowners. And it begs the same question that Jerry's does. Should we have some different standards that, once, if we inspect it and say, it's fine, and then another homeowner's home is ruined, it feels like we have a moral responsibility to fix it?
Sure. And that's a great point. Another very challenging issue with stormwater is we, it's certainly possible that we regulate infill housing more strictly. But that then is going to drive up the cost of homes because, all of a sudden, they're having to go through a lot more due diligence to, not just mitigate further post-development impact, but also to do a hydraulic and hydrologic impact study to understand exactly what happens with the runoff, what the pre and the post are. So, traditionally, in most communities, it's been handled, and residential properties have a particular exemption in the EPD, in the permit that we have as far as some of the particular stormwater requirements. So, most other communities have taken the view that, since they're exempt from stormwater requirements, then it would be really an issue of common law between two property owners that, you know, any new development is required, is responsible for any impact to pre-existing development. We saw that just recently with a case that was settled and a developer that's having to build a pretty substantial pond to accommodate for their impacts. But it's, and so, not only is there kind of the cost to the developer, but there's also some chance that we could take on liability in those cases if then we do step in in kind of a regulatory manner. But we could certainly look into that in more detail.
Understand, but to me, it's always been a moral issue. This, you know, if we as a government allow somebody to come in and damage somebody else's property because we don't, because we give them a permit to do something that we shouldn't, you know, maybe you drove, maybe- regulating that's going to drive the price up on housing, but it shouldn't have to fall into fighting it out with your neighbor between two people. Because we, it may be inconvenient, and it may be expensive for new development, but I feel like we have a moral responsibility to take care of some of those things through our regulations. And I don't like regulations, so.
And we can certainly take a look at that if you'd like.
Melissa?
I, you know, I bring this stuff up all the time also about the infill housing impacts on neighboring existing homes. And I feel like, you know, there are some slight regulations we could put in, something as simple as requiring gutters on homes, requiring French drains. Those are fairly inexpensive additions to properties. And also, the PR aspect of it. And I know staff does a great job in person, and we have some really great flyers available. I picked up a great one on rain gardens, which I think, if that kind of information was gotten out to the public more, people could help regulate stormwater runoff issues on their property better. And, you know, I was hoping to find that flyer on the website, and I'm having a hard time. So, I just wonder if a little bit of redesign of the stormwater website page could help make that kind of information more accessible? You know, we hear about stormwater all the time, and people complaining about the fee and also complaining about water coming across their property. But if information was at the tips of their fingertips on how to fix these problems themselves, and I've had plenty of conversations with constituents who have these problems, and I'm like, this is all you need to do to funnel this away from your home, and you're fine. And, you know, oftentimes, it's something they can do themselves. I mean, my husband and I dug a trench around our house of the French drain and solved some problems. And I've had constituents end up doing the same thing. So, I just, I think maybe a video would be really great.
Melissa, I'm sorry, we're, it's getting late. We're getting, we're pulling them off track of what they're here for, although they're very good ideas.
But those are good suggestions.
I just think we could ameliate some of the concerns in the community about the cost if we made information available.
As we get into the second part of this study, and Stantec is already helping us with some recommendations for the second part that kind of address some of the concerns with the website and so forth. So, those are all good. This is the last slide. This is my last slide, but Drew is taking over from here. When we talk about capital, we're really talking about public capital, and mainly on public roads. And a lot of what we're talking about is pipes that have reached the end of their lifetimes, corrugated metal pipes that were installed in the '60s, '70s, perhaps before. And they are failing. And unfortunately, they're surprising us. So, we're just, we need to get ahead of the curve. That's what we really need to do, so that we're doing repairs and replacements before they become emergencies. So, really, that's it for my part of it.
Can I ask a question? So, is that first one the one that was presented in the SPOSS project? Because I've got down 22 million for 26 projects. Y'all have got 12 million. So, what's the-
Sure. And I think this, hopefully, will explain that a little bit better. So, we realize that $93 million in stormwater capital is a big number. So, we've really tried to hone in on exactly what the stormwater need is over the next 10 years. So, to help really define in what our revenue needs are. And really, just to be clear on our purpose here, really, what we're hoping to get in a conversation that we're hoping to facilitate is what should that revenue requirement be? is what should that revenue requirement be? What exactly should we be doing? Because that revenue requirement's really going to set the table for the fees and credit discussion that's coming in the next phase. So the $22 million you see here, and it's really those last three bullet points there. So the $22 million is the sum of the pipe replacement priority one and pipe replacement priority two. Those are pipes that are failing. That's the pipes like Barber Street, like Weatherly Woods. And these that we've had, Riverview, that over the last 24 months, and y'all may have heard me say this, we've had 12 failures. So we're averaging every two months, a call from Kevin saying, "Hey, guess what?" And then all kinds of pictures and a flurry of activity to really shore up the road and make sure that there's no further damage to life or property. So the pipe replacement is really, it's capital, but it's capital maintenance. It's really status quo, keeping the system that we have out there now, keeping it in good order, and making sure that we don't have, you know, Barber Street, just to give you a brief update, and we could have filled 50 more slides with pictures of mangled pipe. But Barber Street's one, that's really a great example. There's, not only is it a big 15-foot by 10-foot metal culvert that's failed, and is really starting to become two, as the bottom comes up and the top comes down, but there's, and there's the road over top of it, both critical assets to the community. But there's a couple of water mains that are critical to service throughout the community, as well as a gas line that serves half of Athens. So it's difficult to overstate the importance of these pipes and the impacts of those pipes failing. Fortunately, we're running a surplus year over year between revenues and expenses in our stormwater utility, and it has allowed us to address those problems as they've come up over the last two years. But that funding is dwindling quickly. Barber Street, again, about $1 million to replace that pipe. So pipe replacement. So I won't speak quite as much as the other two. The $12 million for flood mitigation, that's $6 million for water quality, those are system improvements. So that's taking what we have now and improving, making it less likely to flood in a heavy rain event, or really trying to get at the, how'd you say, 60 mile, what were we talking about?
69.
69 miles of impaired water. So this is really trying to improve the situation that we have now. So maintain status quo in some respects, improving the infrastructure, the sustainability of the infrastructure, and then improving the system overall. So very briefly, I don't think you had this in your packet, but this is a synthesis of public comment. Commissioner Harrod, that very last bullet point on respondents that say, "I would not support an increase." So there were three that, I think you asked this question last time. The majority kind of respected the question that if they do support an increase, here are the things that they'd like to see. And we heard water quantity, flood mitigation projects, water quality projects in that. Just a couple of highlights from this. I won't get into too much detail. This is in the agenda report. But 94% of respondents believe that the fee should continue to charge tax-exempt properties. That's the whole idea of really the fee, that those that contribute to the problem or opportunity of stormwater really contribute financially to the solutions thereof. So other than that, it was relatively mixed. 54% believe existing funding is sufficient. 53% would not support an increase. So, you know, 45% believe there are more issues than can be addressed with existing funding. So there wasn't a clear consensus of the community. And so we really struggled with a recommendation. So, but our recommendation is scenario three, and I'll go into more detail there in a second. But, so scenario one is really status quo. There's sufficient funding, given the current revenue, to handle our expenses and our current level of service. We really even, given current revenues, could expand that level of service a little bit. That's why we've recommended, or why scenario two also shows level of service B2, which is the camera truck, and then level of service B3, which is the vector truck. And that's really, the intent of those two, without getting into great detail, is to become more proactive, to find problems before we get that call from Kevin that something has failed. Scenario three builds on two in adding that live stream pipes, capital only. So that's the $22 million of replacing failing pipes. This is what we're recommending. And again, it's something that we struggled with. It's something that is, we've submitted a SPOS project. It could very well be funded out of the SPOS program, but given the weight of these potential failures, having a sustainable funding source to be able to address them, we thought was important. Again, it's really a question for y'all whether we fund that, where we fund that out of, but this is the recommendation that we had there. It also drew a very clear line between enterprise funding and SPOS funding, in that the enterprise could take care of what we have out there currently, and then the SPOS could really expand and do more when it comes to flood mitigation and water quality. So that's really what has informed our recommendation. Concurrent with that, that monthly fee, that $5 monthly fee, which relates, and this is for a typical property, to $60 a year, is consistent. Sandec has done these really across the country and helped stormwater utilities. $5 a month is about the going rate, and what they've seen is the market average for fees. So really, that's all we have. This is really where we wanted to settle. And the big question for you is that fourth column there of FY28 revenue.
Questions?
I've got a few. How many, can you go back to the one that had the, yeah, the respondents, that one? So how many people participated? 350? And so on the bottom, when it says 54%, that's 54% of 350, but underneath that, that'd be 33% of the 54%, right? You're breaking down that. Is that how we're supposed to read that?
Sure. No, so 54% would not support an increase. So roughly 45 would. And those 45 that said they would support an increase, they were asked, "Okay, if you support an increase, what would you like to see done with that increase?" And they were able to select more than one option. So those don't necessarily add up to...
Okay. And then, this was something that hasn't come back up, but was something that was discussed probably a year or two ago now, when we started talking about moving to address this, undeveloped lots. Right now, they're not charged one of those fees, quantity or quality fee or something, and where's that?
They're not charging anything.
They're not charging anything. And I know, when I've had to try to explain to residents, I mean, you know, the way I try to understand this is, you know, the stormwater program provides for all the water shedding off all of the public roads that all of us use, and we're supposed to share in that. But those who own undeveloped land aren't sharing in any portion of that. So I personally think that that's not equitable, use that word. That's not equitable, and that should be addressed. I get that their land's undeveloped, therefore, they don't have impervious surface or whatever, and I get that. I don't get where they don't have to be charged something for the other. Because, and I certainly understand, because I've had issues in my, within my own district, where people have ponds or whatever, and they want to claim those are, you know, detention. And they can get credit, some of that farming property, because of where my district is. But in those situations where you just have a vacant lot, good example might be the corner of Lexington Road in Cherokee. That's just dirt. I mean, you know, they're not managing the stormwater, but every, but they're, you know, there's not, and I would assume, maybe they are paying some fee, but an undeveloped piece of property is still, is still, needs to be addressed, in my opinion.
I agree. And I follow that logic as well. When I started here, we have a base quantity and quality. You could make a case that everyone should pay into the base fee, and that's really consistent with, really, you can, you're able, based on our current credit system, and again, we're looking at this now, you do everything possible when it comes to stormwater management. And if you have impervious surface, it's not possible to exempt out of the base fee. So the structure is there. The challenge is, and Bill's not here, but when this went to the Georgia Supreme Court, that was a big reason why we were successful, is the fact that undeveloped properties were not charged anything. And so while I agree with you, and really followed, you know, kind of that same thinking, well, why don't we? So that's kind of very practically, the Supreme Court, kind of, that was a big basis of their decision. But even maybe more kind of into the weeds of the stormwater is the fact that an undeveloped property, maybe not the one there at Lexington and Gaines School, but when we think about a kind of a true undeveloped, never touched piece of property, that's got a healthy tree canopy and healthy topsoil there, is really, not only is it not impacting stormwater in that it's, now, there is some stormwater that comes off of it, absorbing it, but it's really performing a water quality benefit, that not only is it not taxing, but it's actually benefiting the overall stormwater quality. So I certainly understand and sympathize with kind of that idea, but I do think that could present some legal challenges, should we start charging undeveloped properties.
Well, but, and I guess it's just, it's on how you look at it. My thought is, is I don't own the street out here in front of City Hall, but I have to help pay for it. I don't necessarily gain any benefit if I don't ever, you know, use it, but I have to pay for it. It seems like to me, that sort of, you know, and I don't know the ins and outs of the Supreme Court thing, and it would be helpful if Bill could give us a little bit more information about that, so we could understand. But it seems like to me, that's, your basis is, everybody benefits from the road structure, and from us cleaning out the basins to keep the water flowing, and not backing up, and et cetera. And that ought to be the basis for that base fee. And then if you own property that does not develop, then you don't pay a quality, and you don't pay a quantity. That's fair. I mean, but if you do, and you have impervious surface, then you pay according to that. I mean, it just doesn't seem very logical. I understand it's not always, the law's not always logical, but it does, it does seem like it was not equitable anyway. So.
Sure. And we can get some more background from Bill.
Okay. Y'all ready? Move on?
I have a quick question. Can we get a copy of that slide with the community input? It's not in the online presentation.
It's not. It's in the attachment for the agenda item.
I knew I'd seen it somewhere. That's where it is.
So, and just before we leave this, any additional thoughts on capital? Again, that's something we really struggled with, bringing a recommendation. Again, you'll have opportunity again in the agenda cycle, but...
I guess just in terms of process. So if we're approving scenario three, and I think that's split between the kind of stormwater utility funding and some SPOS funding, I mean, it means that, you know, not everything is, you know, being funded across the cash register. I mean, that assumes that that's going to make it into the next SPOS package. And so I guess I ask us, does that also mean that we're designating that as a must-have item on the next SPOS?
Well, these will, yeah, and depending on what order they come up on the agenda, I mean, that's, you know, we may do it either in the, you know, if we vote on the designated, and we don't include this, and then we vote yes on this, then we've just added it to the list, I guess. So we'll have to, good question.
It's a good question. The, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Wait, I was going to say, we may need some thought from our manager on that, those last questions. But go ahead, Melissa.
I mean, I'm thinking the same thing. You know, what if there's pushback on this kind of infrastructure to be included in SPOS? So I think that, you know, if there's a good case to be made in identifying those high-risk pipes, the ones that are like imperatively going to fail soon, and emphasizing that we need to have this cash on hand to prevent roads from caving, and gas lines from breaking, and water lines from breaking, you know, if we can come up with the matched dollar amount that identifies the cost of replacing those pipes imminently with SPOS funds.
Sure. The, and it maybe sounds odd to say, but I think that $22 million number is that number.
Okay. So 18 is less than that, and that's a good case.
We did identify priority one and priority two. So the 16 are in kind of some stage of failure at this point. The 6.1 million are close there. But those are all things that I think need to happen, really, within the next 10 years for sure, and many sooner than that. What I would suggest to Commissioner Gertz's question there is that $22 million, should it not be funded out of the stormwater utility? And I do recognize that it, that does involve a rate increase, and that's not something that we enter into too lightly. And I know you feel the same way. Should the idea be that we want to keep the rate consistent? I would suggest that this would be a great candidate for being designated in the SPOS program. The other 18 million of flood mitigation and water quality, those are system improvements. And so that's what we recommend at the staff level, to continue to improve, to continue delivering on the master plan and the watershed management plans. But those are scalable. So they could be, they could be more, but they also could be less than that 18 million. So that's something, again, is really a value judgment that I'll leave for you and the citizen if I were to...
Mayor, I had a couple more questions real quick. So go one more slide, maybe one more. Yeah. So right now, how much money do we have in stormwater capital?
We've got, after Barber Street in the neighborhood of $800,000 or so.
Okay, all right. So the, so down at the bottom, scenario four, that's projected based on $6 a month, or $72 per whatever, that's the capital we would raise? Is that how?
That's the total revenue.
That we would raise over a 10-year period, if we charged that fee?
That is the annual revenue.
That's the...
Eight's the annual, isn't it?
You know, eight is. I know, I was asking about 40. I was just trying to make sure I understood. And then...
Yes, I'm sorry. The 40 million is the, over the 10 years.
Right, right, okay.
Yes.
If we did scenario three, though, you're talking about camera trucks, you're talking about operational expenses. So not only would we be potentially committing to capital expenditures, but you're committing to operational revenues as well, for whenever that hits the, you know, whenever that comes up. It could be, you know, potentially fiscal year 20, or 21, or whatever. And so, I mean, I think that's important to understand. And we don't have, do we have that, I mean, is that, that's not built in, is it? I mean, is that capital and operating in that money?
Yes.
Yes.
That's all-inclusive. That's, total revenue in FY28 would be, so for scenario three would be six and a half million. And then over the next 10 years, based on that annual fee, it would raise, in this particular case, 22 million in capital. The remainder of that...
That's about 4 million a year in actual capital, and 2 million a year in operating? Is that how we're supposed to read it? I guess, I'm just trying to figure out, what is operating every year? I mean, if you've got 40 million over 10 years, that'd be 4 million a year, right?
So it would be...
And if your revenue's six, then I'm assuming that's 2 and 1/2 million operating overage and four to capital, no?
So we currently raise about a little over $4 million a year with the current fee. And when you add this on there, that will raise, you know, there's a little bit extra. We can cover these extra services that Drew's talking about. And then the rest of it would be going towards the capital.
And probably another way to look at that would be, scenario two is really the same as scenario three, just scenario three adds on the $22 million in capital. So $4.6 million would cover the operating, and then the remainder of that, 1.9 million over 10 years would cover the, and I know that math doesn't quite work out, and I believe that assumed that we were borrowing...
10, 20, okay.
That we were bonding for some of that. Yeah. And there's a little bit of revenue over what's budgeted as well currently.
Okay. If you don't mind, just, and when y'all do the budget, if, when you do the agenda report, we include what operating, what we're looking at operating, just so we get a clear understanding of what we're essentially committing future commissions to, to some extent.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. You have another one, don't you, Drew?
Yes, ma'am. This one we should be able to get through fairly quick. I know it's late.
There's his consultant again.
Somehow I don't have a mouse.
She works cheap, though, doesn't she?
Yes.
Same.
Let me try this.
See baby pictures? I think it's cute. She was a TV star when she was young.
Right. There we go. So regional stormwater facility feasibility. This is something that was really an idea that started when David Clark was still here. It's something that kind of bumped around, that we talked about. But with the 2020 SPOS coming up, the desire to redevelop Atlanta Highway and Lexington Road, it's something that we heard a lot of, is that regional stormwater is something that really could help spur that. And so we initiated this feasibility study with Arcadis, and this is the completion of that. It's really, at this point, it's in cycle, November, December, to really just accept the recommendations of the study. But there's no funding associated with it at this point. It's a project that's been submitted into the SPOS 2020. So if funded in that, then this is what it would fund out of that. So we'll review just a brief history, advantages of regional stormwater as an approach, look at the study areas that we looked at very particularly with this study, site selection process, present facilities and the watersheds that they would potentially benefit, as well as the governance and funding arrangement. So this is a lot of the very same history that you heard before, that we are regulated Phase II... Phase II permit from the, the EPD. So moving forward, EPD, it's, it's not been, since 2005, it's not been just a line in the sand that's not moved at all. They continue to get stricter and stricter with what they require us to require of developers. We saw that most recently in December, we adopted a revision to the, the Stormwater Management Ordinance that redefined redevelopment and took away an exemption that, that we had in there. We're looking at ways to, to try to help with the ordinance to encourage redevelopment, but, and that will be forthcoming in the January, February agenda cycle. But this is really more, this particular presentation is more about infrastructure and how infrastructure can be a piece of that rather than, than the ordinance. So, and then concurrent with this analysis, Kim Lee Horn has been working on the corridor studies on Atlanta Highway and Lexington Road. So the advantages of regional detention, it incentivizes redevelopment. That's, that's really the primary goal of what we were looking at with this, with this study. But it, but it also has some day-one benefits that, that are realized. It, it improves water quality in areas that were developed prior to any of the current stormwater regulations. So it, it really is able to help mitigate potential for downstream flooding in, in major storm events, as well as improve the quality of the storm, of the watersheds that they're, that they're in. It's cost-effective. So there is a law of scale that works in this, in that if we build one larger site, it's less expensive on the, on the net than five smaller sites. And then finally, as a, as an Athens-Clark County facility, it would be something that would be more regularly maintained than, than maybe something that would be in the, in the private development realm. Project areas, Lexington Road, Atlanta Highway, and we'll show those here. So the study areas really broke down based on watersheds, not the corridor. So you'll see the green area extend really beyond the particular corridor. That's just a function of where the water goes. So the, the study areas, the first one breaks down between the Pepsi Plant and Monroe Highway along Atlanta Highway to the Loop. The second one picks up at the Loop and then continues down to the, the river. So that's the full extent of the Atlanta Highway, and then moving over into Lexington Road, again, picks up at the Loop and then goes almost all the way to Gaines School to pick up that intersection, which we know is a, a node for economic development and hopefully redevelopment. We included the Cedar Creek watershed, so you'll notice that at the very top of that watershed is that intersection of Lexington and Gaines School and Cherokee Road. And that, that allows us to, to really pull in Willowood primarily. So site identification and selection, Arcadis did, I think, a very good job of looking at the study areas, identifying potential locations, looking at the total drainage area and then what the flows could be there. And really, they started off with a very nuts and bolts hydraulic and hydrologic analysis, and then moved into more of an economic development, looking at what sites might have potential for redevelopment. And so you'll see these sites listed here, we'll, we'll go into more detail, but, but I will mention Coal Lake and Tremont. The agenda report will show more information about those particular sites. We did not move those into kind of a conceptual design because they are in more largely residential areas that we wouldn't see as much potential for redevelopment.
Where is Coal Lake? I'm not familiar with that.
It, it's on the Atlanta Highway corridor. It's within the Region One, so it's more to, it's, it's on the western side. It's, it's outside the, the Loop, but, but we can hear that. This is one that we got really excited about initially. So DeKalb Lake, it's between Barnett Shoals and Lexington Road. It has a, a really large drainage area, and I'll show on, on this site. So it goes up to about the, let's see, I don't know if I have a pointer. Is that working?
Up the airport.
It goes up to the airport.
Well, there we go.
From Barnett Shoals.
Nope, not working. So it, it goes up to about where the General Dollar is, is the, the watershed there, and, and then all the way down almost to the, the Gaines School intersection. So it picks up, it picks up a lot of the airport. So it's, it's a massive watershed and potential for, for Lexington Road there.
Is there a reason that that lot on the corner of Gaines and Lexington is not part of it?
Just topography. There's apparently a ridge there. I'd have to look at the, the topo, but the study areas are really defined based on, I'm sorry, based on where, where the watershed, where, where the water goes. And you'll notice with Cedar Creek, Cedar Creek picks up that, that corner.
Oh, okay.
So, so really exciting from the, the watershed that it, that it picks up. Unfortunately, it had some mitigating circumstances that, that made it really infeasible for regional detention. There's what, what the stormwater guys have called intervening stream reaches, which basically means that to get from Lexington to the lake, it, it has to travel in a stream. It's just not sheet flow. And so in, in so doing, the, any, any development that happens on Lexington would still have to do some channel protection, would have to do onsite stormwater facilities to protect those streams, which really takes away a lot of the benefit if they're having to do it onsite anyways, because the lake is too far away, then, and carries too much water as it is now, to, to, to the point where it's become a stream, then it takes away some of the benefit there. The area around the lake is, is part of an approved PD. There's building going on currently. So it would really require that PD to be redesigned based on the, the lake in, in order to gain the proper storage, to be a regional detention site, that the normal pool of the lake would have to be lowered. And so it, it would, it would really require a change in that development. And then finally, the property owner, when, when we approached them to really get in there and, and take some pictures, get to understand what's going on hydraulically or hydrologically a little bit better, did not allow us access and was not supportive of, of what we were doing. So exciting initially, unfortunately, doesn't seem to be feasible at this point. Conway, so here is the watershed for the, the Conway site. This is back behind where the, I believe that's the CarMax, that's going in, the Ford dealership right there, kind of at the bottom of the screen. So it, it is a, a new stormwater facility. It's building in an area that, that is not a pond currently, would be able to pick up all of this area and really take care of stormwater for, for that particular area just to the, to the west of, of the mall. Moving on, this, this site we've called ACC Gov because it's around all of our facilities there on Lexington Road. You see facilities and, and landscape management to the left there of the screen. Traffic is kind of off to the right, so it fits into that wooded area there now. This would be designed, I know there's future plans for expansion, maybe an entrance to the airport off of Lexington. This would be designed with that in mind and really would, more than anything else, oh, and here's the, the watershed, more than anything else, this is probably based on the ownership, probably more practically, a stormwater facility that helps facilitate Athens-Clark County development. So I'll, I'll leave it to, to y'all whether or not that fits kind of the, the goals of redevelopment. But then also.
Oh, sorry. Let me.
Yes, ma'am.
So, and the reason it does is because the water's shedding, it's actually shedding, I mean, the water on Lexington Road is shedding south, not north. It's not, so that's why it's only affecting our property.
Correct. And we could, in our, and we talk about governance here in a little bit, so we could set it up that if you get it there, we'll handle it. So, so if they're able to get their stormwater to flow across the road and into the, I, I think that's going to be challenging, just based on the topography, that it's falling off that way. And that's actually part of that, that DeKalb Lake, that's getting into a stream and then getting down to that lake towards, towards Barnett Shoals. And the watershed to the north does continue up a little ways, almost, it, it stops there at the runway, but I, looking at topography today, I, I think it goes up to the, the quarry. But with that being all within the airport and the runways, I, I don't think that's really kind of, this is the more or less usable space, although it would still have some of the navigation easements and all that with the, the airport. The, the mall site, so this is the old Dollar Theater, and it would convert that into a, a new stormwater facility. It would requiring, require purchasing that land and then tearing down that building and, and potentially relocating some of the solid waste containers back in the back part of that parking lot. But when we look at potential watersheds, this has really a very, very high potential. When we look at the areas that are opened up that, that can drain into that, that new site, we have all, all of the mall and, and much of the commercial development just to the west of the mall. This is, you'll notice in the agenda report that this is Alternative One. There's also an Alternative Two that we did not include in this presentation, but it's a little bit larger pond and could actually manage all of that stormwater. This one's a little bit smaller. It opens up the opportunity for what Arcadis has called an amenity area, so could, could be some trails or what have you there to, to make it more of a stormwater as an amenity, which is another theme that we've heard here, here lately. So, and, and really that question gets into governance, which we'll talk about in a second. And then this site we're calling Willowood, because it's right there and it treats the Willowood Shopping Center. You see the, the basin there, and that picks up that corner on the, on the southwest corner of Lexington and Gaines School. This is at the headwaters of, of Cedar Creek, so it would be putting in a, a new stormwater facility in what's really a vacant piece of that development. And I, I think this one, as far as, although it's a smaller drainage basin, does offer some unique opportunities being at the headwaters of, of Cedar Creek. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, just a remark on, back on the mall detention pond, that currently all of that water is coming off of that, or that, that area that you described, is going into a creek and going through neighborhoods, which is causing some major problems.
It is, and there's some, we've spent a lot of time out there investigating illicit discharges. So there's.
Really?
In, kind of back on the backside of this parking lot. So there's opportunity there. I, that's, it picks up a larger area, and that, that gets into a little bit of that, yes, this would help with redevelopment, but also there's day-one benefits here in the impacts to, to downstream and, and what that does for quality and, and quantity. So Willowood, you see the, the drainage area, it's, it's pretty much that shopping center there on the, the southeast corner. Governance, so there's really, there's more than two ways to, to get at this, but, but essentially it breaks down into, we either would, if, if funded through the SPOLOST program or other sources, we would go out, we would build the facility and first come, first served. Here's, here's a great thing that we've done for the community, and developers more or less have at it. Partnership funding, so this would be that same idea, and we would want to get the attorneys involved in really setting up this particular governance, because it would mean that we would build the facility and then we would sell capacity in some, some sense where there's a certain amount of credits that, that can be bought into in that stormwater. And so in order to get out of some of the stormwater requirements, the developer would then be able to buy credits into that stormwater facility. And once those credits are gone, we talked a little bit about that, the mall facility, and that's really a question of if we build it larger, are there sufficient credits for all of that to redevelopment? If we build it a little bit smaller, then it's more of a, a first come, first served. Once those credits are gone, they're, they're gone. So, and then the capital funding source could be replenished and then reinvested into other similar projects. So, next steps, we've got the agenda item coming before you in, in this current cycle as well as a 2020 SPOLOST project.
Sharon. Melissa, I'm sorry, I wasn't sure you had agenda.
You can go.
Go ahead.
I'm intrigued by the mall location, too, because it has a, a nice amenity, and we talk frequently about the need for recreational facilities or a park on the west side. There's a whole lot of empty, empty pavement out there that's getting used less and less, and, and so much potential for development. And, you know, with a recreational facility there, it could be, you know, recreational-type development. I mean, I just, I'm, I'm just really intrigued by that. I'd like to see that explored more in depth in a more economic planning perspective.
Sharon.
Yeah, so obviously disappointed that, that, you know, the characteristics of, of the watershed there along Lexington Road for Dekalb wouldn't work, and certainly no sense forcing it, you know, forcing it in a bad situation if it wouldn't work. But, but, you know, the purpose of looking at this was, you know, economic development, development, redevelopment, whatever along that corridor, and that, that's the largest area. So I guess my question would be, I mean, while Willowood would address a residential issue, it's not really going to help us economic, you know, it's not going to help for why, why we asked for this originally. So my question would be, I know that there is still property, there are still parcels for sale along Lexington Road. Would we, why would we not or would we want to consider looking at one, just like you looked at that parcel? I mean, that's not, you know, that's, you looked to purchase that. Would we not want to look at a parcel down on the watershed between Gaines and the Loop, where that larger watershed that might have worked for Dekalb, a parcel along there, across perhaps from, like, farmers, you know, that would be, that would capture, would do more than what the Dekalb Lake, you know, potentially, you know, the problems we're having with that as a site for, you know, the various problems around it. There's properties within that bend, sort of about middle of the road there. Would we not want to look at trying to purchase property there and build something that might provide the economic, you know, might provide, I mean, just curious why we wouldn't want to, or did you not, did y'all look at that? And what would be the cost? I mean, you know, we don't have costs in any of this, so we don't, you know, this is really just a feasibility, not a financial.
In this, we, we do have costs in the, in the final report, in the agenda report. It's certainly something we could, the, the Willowood site does, it is absolutely more limited. Would open up the opportunity to redevelop Willowood. There's really nowhere to put a, a stormwater facility should that, without taking out existing pavement, so. But, but you're right, it doesn't, as far as kind of a landmass, when we compare it to really that mall site, there's not a site like that on Lexington based on what the, the stormwater folks found. If, if there was a, a particular plan, and maybe for, for this, we'll look to the, the corridor studies to identify particular parcels for redevelopment. Since the, the hydrology didn't jump out of, at, at us as, hey, here's a great site based on everything that's flowing there, I think at, at this point, if the desire was to do more on Lexington Road, then a better way to go at it would be, if, if we can't go in the front door, let's come in the back door, and let's identify the, the properties that we would like to see redeveloped, and then look at those very specific properties and look and see how we can design a, a site that would fit for those properties, because there, there are kind of residential interspersed that, that, again, made the, the stormwater piece of it not, not, again, jump out at the stormwater engineers, but that's something that could, could be fleshed out a, a little bit more in, in concept development.
Okay. Mr. Neese.
I wanted to point out, Melissa, that that theater site on the mall, that is, that is a piece of property, which is not, not really part of the mall. The theater sits on the other side of the mall, Back Road, and then the parking lot is then south of that road that belongs to the mall. So just, just to point that out.
But the parking lot is the, the mall parking lot and the mall itself is the watershed that would be draining into.
It is. It is. But, but I think that's a, that could have a, a good economic impact, that particular one. And also turning it into, it would be a very small park, nonetheless, is an interesting, interesting concept if we owned that property. It might just be a playground. Also, the, the one on Whitetail, the further down Atlanta Highway, that, that seems to offer some good benefits for redevelopment. It's too bad we can't affect things a little more west from there as well. Most of the property on Atlanta Highway behind, which would be zoning into the Conway detention pond, is developed or has plans to be developed. So I'm not sure what the impact would be. But further, further west of there, there's, on both sides of Atlanta Highway, there's a, a lot of potential.
And I, and I think with this particular one, there's probably the space that's most reasonable, because you're right, the, the CarMax, they're, they've got a development approved, and they've got stormwater to accommodate all that. That opportunity is probably more of a development rather than a redevelopment opportunity, and, and really it would be the area south of Whitetail Way. It wouldn't be specifically on Atlanta Highway, to your point.
Which is, yeah, which is good. Which is good. And of course, everybody, to know Atlanta Highway is a ridge. The water flows north on one side and south on the other, all the way down that highway.
Interesting enough, a lot of our roads are, and that's, it was one of the things that Todd pointed out, that when he looked at the roads and why are the roads the way they are, and it relates back to. they are, and it relates back to wanting to keep the horses' feet dry and...
That's right.
Y'all ready to let Drew go home, and we can go home?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good presentation.
Drew, that's really encouraging, man. Really good.